And this would be different. We'll start on this side. Greg Cranford.
Cranford here.
Okay, Sean Day.
Present.
Matt Fox, he does not be here. Julia Wisenberg here. Marcus Kasseck here. David Austin.
Present.
David Creel.
Here.
Terrific. All right, first order on our agenda is to review and approve the minutes from May 13th, 2025. Did everyone get a chance to look at those? Any comments or concerns or additions on this? Greg, you're okay? Okay, so if somebody could make a motion to approve the minutes from May 13th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. All right, next thing, we're going to pay a bill from the Reiner Group, which is our engineer. And the bulk of this invoice pertains to subdivisions, namely Crescent Beach LLC, our Fowler subdivision. And a third thing was some extra meetings and debriefing, bringing our new engineer up to speed. So we have Rick Wesnowski here in lieu of Joe, but so that was the third portion of that bill. The amount of the bill is $1,675.
Make a motion to repay the bill?
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Carry it. Okay. Next thing. Okay, we're going to go over some extension requests. The first one is Elliot Bowesman. And this basically pertains to submitting the county approved map. So that's what they're, they are still waiting for. Matt Sherman asked for an extension. I think it's appropriate. It's not really on the owner for this. So if everyone's okay with that, approve this one. Jessica, do you have a number on this one?
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the extension approval of this particular lot line adjustment for Elliot Bowesman?
Motion to accept.
Okay. Second?
Second.
David, sorry. Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's carried. Second one is the Radigan Lot Line Adjustment. And so these Ds were approved by the planning board, and they were given to the owner to file with the county. But the reason they're asking for the extension is that they still need to finalize Suffolk County Health Department approval. So again, it's just a matter of getting that through. So I think it's appropriate for us to extend this timeline. Is everybody okay with the resolution? And then, so this will be number 10, Jessica?
Oh.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution extension for the lot line adjustment for Rick Radigan?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Marcus. A second?
Good.
Second, David Creel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that extension was approved. And the last one, number 11. This next one is DeFoe and Share, which is a lot line adjustment. And it's a similar case. They're just waiting for Suffolk County Health Department stamp of approval on that. So if everyone is okay with that one, I think it's inappropriate. Again, it's not, it's not that the owner's causing a delay. They're just waiting for the Health Department to approve the map. Can I get a motion for approving DeFoe Share? Greg, and second on Sean. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that resolution extension was passed. Thank you, everybody, on that. That's it. So can I get a motion to, we're going to close the business meetings?
Motion to close.
Second? Okay. We'll close that, and we'll go into our work session. David, did you want to ask?
If you wanted to open it to anybody in the world, but.
Okay.
I don't know if it's appropriate or not.
Yeah, it's.
There's nothing, there's nothing.
Really nothing. I mean, you could, but.
All good.
Yeah, we can always do it at the end if we need to. Okay, so we just went on a lot line modification application agenda. We just did Bowesman. We did Radigan. Borough Hall, they are still waiting on the deed recording, and they have not reached their deadline yet. They still have time. I'm sure they, yeah.
I have reviewed those feeds. I got, I have those feeds from Borough Hall, and I reviewed them today. I approved them. I sent an email to the applicant's attorney. And also the letter, you know, to your office indicating that I've approved the deeds.
Okay, and that just happened today?
Yeah, I reviewed them. I got the deeds. I don't know, Jessica, send them to me or John Waig.
Okay.
Because you can send them to me directly.
Yeah.
You know, I have to deliver them to you.
Okay, good news. Thank you for that update. Okay, DeFoe and Share, we just went over. Next on our agenda, under our subdivisions. We still have the Bloom Minor Subdivision. Again, their deadline is August 11th. They still have sufficient time to complete that. If they need an extension, I guess they'll come forth. West Net Creek cottages, we don't have anything further on that. But again, their deadline is a little bit later, October 14th. Still sufficient time. Now, under Fowler Trust, we received some correspondence. Carl, you're here. So did you want to speak about just that you're asking for us to postpone discussion of it until next meeting? Was.
That was the correspondence?
That's Crescent.
Oh, that's Crescent? Oh, okay. Sorry, sorry. Okay. No, no, come back.
Why am I here?
No, no, come back, come back, sorry. Too many, too many applications. No, feel free to speak, Carl.
Thank you, Chair. When we were last here, the issue arose, Mr. Whalen was going to consider and analyze whether you could in fact use conservation easements to meet the partner requirement. I received a memo, which I'm sure you.
Got that, sir.
Their own well-written memo indicating that it is in opinion that you can. That was how we had designed sketch plan approval with easements. When we were last here, there was discussion about, I think it would be, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the board had mentioned consideration of moving that setback from the easement and actually having the preservation extended into setback. If you recall, each of the lots has a, goes with a 50-foot easement, and then for, for the lots, a 25-foot setback from that easement, and one of them, a 20-foot setback. I believe it was Mr. Davy had asked that we consider essentially foregoing the setback to a degree increasing the easement. I'm willing to certainly engage my client with that conversation. I think first we need to determine if easements were acceptable. I think we're at that point. So we would have that conversation. I did ask Rick if there had been any response to secret coordination. I don't know if he's aware. I might have.
No, I'll talk with Joe about that because I didn't see any correspondence.
So that correspondence was with Joe already, and we didn't start it yet based on the facts that there would be no point in doing that if the maps are going to be changed. So that's why we just, we held up. The only step, we sent it to the Planning Commission, and we got the standard letter back, you know, giving local jurisdiction and whatnot. Not promising anything with the erosion on the beach and the usual stuff.
That's fair.
Yeah.
So I guess, how would you like to proceed?
Well, just, just to be clear, that may be the easiest route to address what I was saying. I didn't, I wasn't specific about make it a conservation. We were just discussing the idea that, that within that setback, we didn't really want clearing. That was ultimately the goal of it. And so, and so if it's easier just to slip that into the conservation because that's the neatest way to do it, rather than write it some other way or whatever, I'm indifferent. Just to be clear, I was not.
You just want to enhance or extend the preservation?
Correct. And if there is a, at least from my perspective, if there's a preference for your client from one way versus the other, based on, I don't know what advantage they may get, I'm indifferent. It's just as long as we accomplish that goal.
I appreciate that. And is, is the board's position to wait for secret referrals until we come with, with a revised proposal on the clearing?
Yes, that's the best.
I think you could infer out now that we could adjust the clearing.
I would think so, now that I've determined that easements, easements are fine.
Yeah, I guess, I guess at the time, Joe was just waiting because we weren't quite sure. We didn't have that memo.
Yeah, there's a legal question.
Um, but if you're comfortable with that, I mean, if you think it's appropriate, Rick, if that's your experience, if that's okay.
What if the map showing right now, the map is showing easements on the lot?
Easements, 25, 25, and then the one is 20.
The easements are 50, and seven.
Step backs, sorry.
But the easements are not going to change in size.
Potentially, they're talking about.
They could form some of the stickers or some of the setback.
Yeah.
Yeah. The only obligation is the Health Department, right? But it's nobody, well, D C.
Then the Planning Commission.
Well, Planning Commission, yeah.
It's one of the time lookings. You know, ideally, you send the map that you're considering for approval. You know, these are minor changes. Probably not going to affect them, or that could affect the Health Department. So I guess I'll leave it up to you.
That could be the biggest obstacle of the Health Department, though, if you're saying that it's not, if it.
Well, they're not going to care about the easements.
Yeah.
So we'd ask that the referrals can start, and then we'll come with a revised, just that slight revision.
Okay, how do you gentlemen feel about that with just, what do you think?
I think it's fine. I think it's, I don't know if it's going to speed it up or slow it down, if you put a delta, but.
What you have to do for lead agency referral, you have to send them a copy of the application.
Right.
Presumably the map, that's why the map could, you know, maps can change after a lead agency referral. Naturally, what you're doing, you want to, you want to confirm that neither the D C nor the Health Department, neither one wants the responsibility, is going to claim lead agency. So that you can legally be the lead agency. And naturally, there's, there's often after you do your secret hearing, there would be some adjustments to the map anyway.
Well, I'm in favor of getting this board going on secret. Are you okay, Marcus?
Yeah. Yeah, gets us locked in, it's the agency, which is probably better to do sooner versus later.
Also, on our floor chart, it has to go to shot on fire commission. So that's on our, so that can be, that can be done easily now. Okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead and do that.
Right.
I had a couple of questions if I can ask. There was the flag lot question. Has that been put to bed?
The flag lot question would arise if you made the, the buffer areas into parkland. Because then, I think, four or possibly all of the lots would be flag lots technically, because they'd have to go around the corner of the park property to hit, to hit the parkway. And your code says that no more than 60% of lots, I think, in a major subdivision can be flag lots. That's one of the problems with having made that, if you were to make those areas park properties, you then are making flag lots. You're not allowed to have more than three of the five lots as flag lots, which is not what the proposal is. If they're easements, then the lot has full frontage on the road, even though you can only use the corner of it for your driveway. So the answer is that if these are conservation easements on the road, we're okay. We don't have problems like that.
And in a conservation easement, and I've read this thing five times, and I still don't fully understand it. It's the proper, the easement is conveyed to a not-for-profit or to the town.
Can I just add that this was the memo that Rick put together?
Which I, yeah, which I read multiple times.
So a park property would be a separate parcel of land.
Right.
That property would have to be owned by someone other than the lot owner. So it could be deeded to the town of Shelter Island. It could be deeded to a property owners association, which the developer would form. But it's a separate parcel of land. It could be multiple separate parcels of land if each individual buffer was a park property. If you do a conservation easement, the conservation easement is an easement. It's an encircled on the lot. So the property is still owned by the lot owner. But the easement is granted to the town of Shelter Island.
So then, that's not the scenario in paragraph seven, number seven of this, on the last page of it.
I represent.
Of your memo. Oh, I'm sorry, no, of the town, of the town code.
We can't waive it all under these, it's an overlay district. Like the waiver, the waiver allowance here only apply, does not apply in the peninsula and.
Near shore.
So that cannot be applied in this bracket.
Got it. Okay.
I mean, I, I know the concern of the board before I became chairperson was that, it was the scenic vista. It was the look of Nostron Parkway. We didn't want that altered. And I think we sort of accomplished that. And as long as, like what Sean's saying, as long as that setback and the easement are not developed, not cleared, that preserves that look. That's the look of it.
Yeah, that'd be wonderful.
So I have.
Consideration, pretty.
I just also know, for, I know there are new members, this was, we had a yield of seven, so this is already reduced subdivision. By two lot. So, you know, my clients, there were, there was an inquiry, are they planning to develop and sell this? They are not. They're a family. They are interested in keeping that look. It's yours.
Okay. Thank you, Rick, for putting together that memo. I think that was really helpful in helping us determine this.
Yes.
Jessica, can you, can you post that memo, or did you already do it? I, I think we should post. It's, it's a good.
I do have a question.
Yes.
I don't know if it's the appropriate time to ask, but I had asked previously, is there anything that prevents further subdivision?
I was thinking that as he said it, but I think that's going to come up later.
We'd agree to a covenant that no further subdivision.
Yeah.
And I would recommend, given the offer, I would recommend that you have some sort of instrument that precludes future subdivision, because that's a valid, that's a valid.
Good point.
I was almost going to ask that, but then I realized we're going to touch on that.
I don't know if any of the individual lots could be further subdivision. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Based on their size.
Some means it's always though, if you're even like halfway there, so that no one comes in someday for a variance. You know, so if you're getting anywhere close to the size, it might be allowed to subdivide. You can still file a non-subdivision covenant, just so no one can even come in, well, you know, I got, I can, I'm pretty close. I can do a, I can a variance create to, you know, slightly undersized lot. You don't even want that to be an option. So, you know, it was always my understanding that there would be a covenant precluding further subdivision, so.
Those are good. I remember when you brought that up.
Well, I don't know if this has been discussed. This is the first major subdivision that I've shown since I've been a member. Has there been a discussion about duration of construction, whether it's sequential or it has to happen in, within a certain period? Because there should be, because I live on a road with a major subdivision with, there are now three houses which have been built sequentially. Each one is an 18-month process, which means I'm in year, almost year five of where I used to have 10 trips a day of traffic on the road. I now probably have 150 or 200 for four and a half years. Because there was no stipulation, that okay, this is pandi on subdivision, there's no stipulation, that okay, you can subdivide it. But the houses have to be built as a single mobilization. I don't know.
I think it's different, like if a builder is doing it as like spec, right? Because then, then it's reasonable by the time limit, at least my understanding is that this is a family, and the kids don't know when they're going to build, when they'll have the money, when they have the time, whatever. So it'd be hard to do that, but if a builder specking out, I agree that, you know, that.
But to the neighbors on Nostron Parkway, whatever street, the nature of the developers is not of consideration. What's consideration to them is how many hundreds of truck trips you're now going to increase and for how many years. And I doubt anyone on Nostron Parkway is going to be delighted to have dump trucks rolling down the street for the next five years. But I don't know the mechanism that you could use to.
That's not here, right, at that delivery, you know? But it's something.
I'm mentioning it only because we're talking about your subdivision, not yours in particular.
Yeah, but just with respect to ours, there, as, as Davey mentioned, there's no plan to develop all of them at any, in the immediate future, because this is going to be family-owned land. So I, in that sense, I don't know how that, if you're forcing them, if you can't develop outside of a window, you'd almost be forcing them to develop in the short term.
That's true.
And I don't believe there's anything in the code.
No.
There isn't. There is.
But that's something that you can bring up. I mean, that's a, that's a nice thing to come to town board with. I mean, that's what I would do.
And or we'll have public meetings about this, and if any of the neighbors.
But there are a couple of houses I thought you mentioned might happen sooner.
There are, yeah, but not all five.
Right.
The only thing I can think of where they do that maybe is the Heights Properties Owners Corp. Might have, the Heights might have some stipulations on, no, I'm not sure. They might have in their own.
Another question that, also, this is probably not the right venue, but is, you know, we don't really have any timeframe for construction. In other words, you can start work at four o'clock in the morning and work until midnight.
And you can do it seven days a week.
Right.
That is something that I, wherever the correct venue is, I think we need to talk about.
So that's something that as a board, we could talk about and put together advisory members at the time, where we've done that in other capacities prior to you gentlemen coming on, so we can definitely do that. I'm totally open to it. But I don't think we can, we can't do it right now.
Just chalk.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks.
Okay. So I, I was looking down at Crescent Beach, and I'm thinking Crescent Beach LLC. So that applicant, Crescent Beach LLC, is the one who reached out to us and asked us to hold off on any further discussion. The things that we had asked of them in their memo, they have not gotten to yet, and I believe they need more time. Okay, we'll take that off.
Do we have any role in the water issue that came to us via email?
No, so, yes, before the record, we did receive some correspondence from the Heights Properties Owner Corp. And they sent a memo to everyone, as you know, to us, and asked us when the application comes back and they open the discussion, because the applicant's asking us to hold it for now. But when we do, they asked us to consider the history of Health Department approval, because at the time when they planned to build their home, the Heights was not able to adequately supply the volume and the pressure that was needed for the water. And that was back then. Now it's under different conditions, depending on how the subdivision turns out, what we decide. They will have to get that letter from the Heights Properties Owners Corp again, saying that they can supply water, and that has to go to the Health Department. So we just have to, we can bring that memo up again at next meeting, actually, when we discuss it, if the applicant's attorney is here.
But is that even a criteria that we use in our evaluation, or is that strictly a Heights issue?
It's a Heights thing, yeah. It's a Heights and Suffolk County Health Department. Yeah. But what we decide could influence, they're going to have to go back and do an engineer's evaluation again on that. So what we decide could influence them, so. Okay, Row Minor Subdivision, we're, we're still waiting on them to submit, to submit their revised sketch plan. At some point, can we take this white performance final?
Yeah, sure.
Councilman Larson? Okay, I'd love to not see that at some point.
I'm a town attorney.
It's, it's an artifact. Okay. All right. So actually, we have, I had, I had Jessica put down his other business to go over the town code requirement versus subdivision. But Rick, we sort of tackled that when we went over that with.
It's a well-written memo.
Yeah, it was really.
Yeah.
And it's also. Still understanding it, but this was well-written. It's a great, well-written memo that tells me that we have a great opportunity to revise the code.
Saying something about this. It seemed to have been designed around the idea that subdivisions recreate park areas.
Yeah.
Presumably for their residents, but park areas in the traditional setting.
Actual park.
The playgrounds, maybe walking paths, things like that. Given the nature of Shelter Island and the school size of both of your subdivisions, you probably don't really want or need a bunch of little playgrounds for, let's face it, most of these people are probably second homeowners anyway, who may not be in most of the year. And yet you can't really use, you can't necessarily use this effectively for open space preservation. One of the things that's in there that is very unusual and odd, but it makes sense in the light of, if the intended.
It's a code.
Parkland is, you can't have wetlands or wetland adjacent regulated areas within your park. Which if you're thinking of a playground, I guess makes sense, but if you're trying to use it to protect sensitive areas like wetlands, you're not allowed to in the park. So, yes, I do think it's something you guys in the town board probably should, should look at.
Yeah, to me, this is a comprehensive plan conversation about what's the goal of potentially dividing up things in the future and how do we want to affect the island? Because it's, like I said, I believe also, when it was originally coded, it was, we want more parks and recreation spots. Because that's, that was where the count, the island was going, and that's probably not applicable as much.
Well, that's where the island came from. If you look at the Heights, which is kind of the only real organized development. It's full of parks and right-of-ways.
Yep.
And presumably, the intent was to build community. Now, you know, at this moment in time, if you had a subdivision and you built a park, is it going to, you know, are people going to put up hedges anyway? You know, as they say in urban planning, you can provide a park, you can't ensure that people will use it, but if you don't provide it, you can ensure that they won't.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, are we ready to go on to some of our wetlands advisory? Okay, great. So first was Keller. So I went to Keller on my own. I know Greg and David Kay also went to Keller. Not that we all can't go to Keller, but. And I passed around just a skeleton, just so we had some structure with like the basic information on top that we can fill in. I'll fill in from our notes tonight. So, so on Keller, basically, there is a foundation, which is existing right there on the waterfront. They'd like to demolish all of that foundation. The foundation had no approvals. I don't know if you noticed, there was a stop work order, which I took a photo of for everyone. And they basically are going to build a two-story, single-family dwelling, three-bedroom, and with, with a garage and two bedrooms over the garage, new septic IA, wood decks, they're going to put in a gravel driveway. So basically, the new construction is landward of the 100 feet. We're really looking at the disturbance of having to demolish this big foundation that's sitting there. And then, we, we had some questions, I think, about the two, what looked to me like kettle holes on the north and south either side, which I think we, all of us saw as we walked in there. So you've got the wetlands right in front of you, and then you have these two kettle holes on either side. So did you want to say anything, Greg and David, further on that?
Yeah, well, weirdly, they don't, neither of them appear on the survey. And as you mentioned, it may be because they indeed are more than 100 feet from the edge of the property. When I, you know, collected ticks walking through the woods and pacing it off, it was very, I mean, if you, if it was 95 feet or 102 feet, I don't know, but it was, it was in that neighborhood. So I'm just surprised that it wasn't at least marked and then flagged, because, you know, the delineation of the wetland is based not on getting your feet wet, it's based on the plants that go around it. So they may very well be within, you know, 100 foot or 75 foot. I think it should get flagged.
So I, I did it too. I walked, because I saw you went, and I, so my foot is 12 inches. I'm very lucky, so I can pace up anywhere. So I walked it, and I came, I was, it was close. It was really close to 100 feet. So I was a little, it was questionable.
My pace is three feet, so I don't have to take quite as much.
I did the whole thing, one after the other. Anyway. But then I was listening to one member of the CAC, who's a former building inspector, mentioning that, you know, usually the, the D C letter of jurisdiction has value, meaning that they, you know, they, they had said that's out of their jurisdiction. So as Marcus pointed out, that might be why the surveyor didn't look to include it in there. However, in that CAC discussion, he did mention that sometimes these letters, you know, they typically have a lifespan of importance, but when something substantial is happening, you know, it, it could call into question the validity of the D C statement at that time. And this is from, I did notice that this was from 2011, so it's an old jurisdiction letter. And Reed Karen was talking to us in another group about, you know, the D C just changed their regulations about how they view wetlands. And a funny story was a person, a homeowner who had made a man-made pond, and that would almost fall under D C jurisdiction just because he made it himself. So, you know, fresh pond wetlands are of greater interest to the D C. So I'm just thinking, it, it could be wise just to say, okay, if they're not, they're out of the 100 feet show with that.
That's very fair.
I think so, because as we observed, it's just, it's such on the, it's so much on the edge, you know? It's a question. Maybe just make sure that.
And again, it's not, it doesn't.
Even, even if it is, right, it would be part of the factor of protecting runoff during demolishing or doing anything into those anyway. So you'd want to see them and see where they're putting barriers and. Just recovering some requests.
Now, David, you also noted in terms of the leaching field being on that slope.
Right.
Which is a substantial slope, that the bottom of those rings would be closer to the groundwater.
Yeah, it, it's not unusual, but the test wells. Yeah. It's not unusual, but the test wells, you don't know, you know, they do the test wells before you even necessarily know where you're going to locate anything. So the location and depth of the test wells, I think really needs to be confirmed in terms of the currently proposed location of the septic and well. Because, you know, you need what, two or three feet from the bottom of the ring to the water, and they were right there. I mean, there was not an inch to spare. And because it's tidal there, you know, the water's going to go up and down.
Yeah.
So I, and I forget, this is Matt Sherman, right?
Yes.
It's not Matt.
Matt is the other one.
It's a very different one than Max.
You can tell by looking.
But if the, if the, if that parking expansion were relocated, the leaching field could be potentially moved up another 25 feet or so. Potentially.
There's nobody here from, there's nobody here obviously for, for this.
Nobody's here from, they'll probably be at a little bit of the town board meeting, but.
I guess we can raise in our advisement, the requests and the town board can deal with it.
Did you have anything?
And there was the shower in the guest house.
Oh, yes, to put, to put a dry, because it just said drainage grade or something.
Right.
I didn't have any.
I should go to a dry well.
Seems like they're trying to fix a mess here, you know?
Yeah.
Those foundations and stuff.
No, it's good. They're doing some good things.
The foundations that they're, that they're now, was the foundation of the original house.
No. Yes, but what's interesting is the plans that are submitted say 2021, and we're at the stop work order. I went up close to it, it's a little faded. I tried to call Reed, but he didn't get back to me. But it says 2023 is the stop work order. And the stop worker has to do with the building of that foundation without permits, as far as I know. But that means they knew they were going to build this other thing back in 2021, and so it's just a little questionable. It's a mess, as you mentioned.
It does. I mean, I'd been in that house when it was more than just a foundation. And it was right about where that foundation was. So I'm a little confused by this.
The foundation looks older.
It does. Yeah. I think that was the foundation from the original house. I'm sorry, they're not here, but.
Okay. It could be. Any concerns with drainage? Parking of construction vehicles? I guess down that narrow, I just thought of that.
Sort of a shared driveway.
Shared driveway. You have that other dwelling, other residence, right? If you go straight to the left. So I'm just thinking, like, we had that case in Silver Beach up with one property where they had an easement down by bootleggers, and we said about just being cautious with putting construction vehicles over to one side so you don't block the neighbor. Anything else on that, Marcus?
Well, the L N J says there's no, you know, there's nothing in the wetlands. So we've used old L N J letters that go back to last century from many owners. What you could do is you could just send an email to the D E C and explain the situation.
Yeah.
But that, was that based on a site inspection or on a survey? Because it's.
It's based on the L N J. I don't know how exactly they do their work, but.
It's only as good as the data you're given. The survey you have doesn't show the wetlands and it's not.
I understand what you're saying, it's not what they're giving.
Yeah.
Or do they actually, do they, no, they're not going to.
Probably don't come physically, you know?
They're not going to.
Yeah, I'm looking at old.
You have to find one with no leaves.
Yeah. That's in 16.
Okay.
And there's the one wetland, and then there's one up. You go north.
I was mainly looking to see if the foundation was there.
Well, that was the house.
That was the house there, this one?
Yeah. Well, there was, there was a house in the guest house, which is still there now.
2019. Yeah. Overground. 2020.
All right. In terms of controlling, you know, construction settlement and revegetation, I think they did a perfectly responsible job.
Okay. Are we good on that? So I'm going to take what we have in our draft request and I'll pass, I'll recirculate it with a few edits and then we can send it off. Okay, next one, O'Sullivan, which is 74 Patonic. I went there alone. Again, David Kriegel and Greg went together, I believe. Oh, you went with us. I also took some video with owner's permission for the rest of you to play sense here. So this one, while I wish all of them could be like this nice, where, it's what I like to see, some new construction, which is on existing foundation. It's going to be better, you know, upgraded, total compliant. They're basically going from a three-bedroom to a four-bedroom, but that's only a case of like 330 gallons per day going up to 440 gallons per day. They're putting in a bunch of dry wells, new IA. They even have a vegetation plan. I think Christian Coughlin did it. The only thing I thought of, because Sean and I live in, it's not in the adjacent this property, but we live in the area, is the saltwater intrusion potential. Silver Beach has just played with it. And I was thinking, in those cases on other applications, we'd ask for the slow-flow pump. So we can do that? It's one other addition.
I had a question that I had brought up with David, which David felt was probably a Z B A question. And that is on the second floor, where they are within the side yard setback. One could argue they're making an existing condition worse by building second floor within the setback. But that's more of a zoning issue.
Yeah, they have to go to the Z B A.
Right. I think that's listed as a place they have to visit.
It's on the list of things that they have to do.
Yeah, they have to do that.
There is a strange thing I noticed in terms of the setbacks, which is that the survey refers to the, I guess they're east-west, north-south property lines as being sideyards. The architectural drawings refer to one of them as being a front yard. In other words, it's a corner lot and there are two front yards. Because that is a mapped street that goes right to the bulkhead.
That's the old, yeah.
So I was wondering why they showed two 40-foot setbacks. And I think they must have interpreted it as a corner lot.
Yeah.
Doesn't affect us, but it certainly affects the Z B A. But, you know, the architect did go to an effort, at least on the 40-foot setback side, to shrink the second floor. And they shrink it on the other side, not quite as much.
Was this the one where you commented about having the north direction be more.
Yeah, well, that's just confusing. Because the architectural drawings have north down and the drawings have north up.
It's come up a lot now. And I never, until, until we met you, I never heard of that.
It should always be good for, you know.
Even if it's not north up, because it doesn't always fit either the reason, but just make them all the same.
It says they're keeping, I believe, most of the existing foundation, right? But we don't know, is there anywhere that anyone saw, like, how much of that is and how much of it is new? And what is, do they have some sort of crawl space?
No, it's a basement.
Yeah.
Basement with a kind of recreation there. Because they're putting in an egress window and an area way to access it. Clearly, they have high hopes for that.
Under the, is currently the garage, you're, that. Not doing.
Not digging it out anymore or anything?
Didn't hear that they were.
Didn't say any of that.
There were no notes that they would, I mean, for instance, maybe it's a 17, I don't know. But there was no notation saying excavation to.
And is, there's a little too many numbers for me. Is everything contained in the existing footprint of the existing house? It's just the second floor is going up on one side?
Just the second floor, a little bit on the side.
A little bit there.
Well, I don't think, no, I don't think they're expanding the footprint at all.
It's just going up.
It's going up. In fact, they're reducing, there's a little porch.
Taking some deck out.
And they're removing, I don't know, two or three feet of it.
The reason I brought up the second floor setback issue is because it is so close to the adjacent property line in its existing non-conforming condition.
Yeah.
I just, it seems to me that if you're building a second floor, that that second floor should not be within the setback.
Yeah. Well, at least as a way to mitigate it, removing the shallow peak roof at the ends of the house and making decks.
That's true.
So it does get a little bit lower, in fact.
Pool goes to Z B A too, given that it's so close to the street?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
It's on, I mean, it's on the other, it's on the street.
Yeah. It's a small, practically, it's a big hot tub.
It would kind of be like.
10 by 25 foot pool.
They have their pool, you know?
It's a lapper.
And they don't have a lot of choices if they want to have a pool. But that's a, I'm sure the neighbors are going to struggle with whatever, however, they're going to try to just hedge it in to keep privacy, but.
Well, they're doing a lot of planting.
Yeah. It's not really our jurisdiction.
I have some stores for sale.
Yeah.
Okay, are we?
One thing, just as a general comment, it would be really helpful if they would include the FEMA map.
Oh, yes, that was on, I had.
And I'm surprised the survey doesn't give the flood zone information. Or maybe it doesn't, I missed it.
Usually it's, I don't see it.
Because the one on Oak Tree, Marcus and I had previously had.
Yeah.
FEMA, that had the FEMA stuff.
Usually, it'd be nice to know the base flood elevation. The existing house is at 12.7 feet. In the new drawings, they call the first floor at 00. So I don't really know.
Really zero, yeah.
Where's, I mean, it's not zero, it'll be underground. But where are they setting the first floor elevation? I mean, it's not really a wetlands issue, but it's connected. I assume they're raising it the required number of feet above base flood elevation.
It's pretty high there. I haven't seen it flood there.
It is, it is high. If you notice in the video, you know, when you look down, the bulkhead, beach, you can't like just jump off and like hit the beach.
But I'd imagine that in a storm surge, waves are crashing over the bulkhead.
Yeah.
That whole line there in Silver Beach is struggling. All those homes along there and they're at the wave action and.
Couple down even, yeah.
You know, reinforcing their bulkheads. It's just scooping sand, keeps scooping sand right out of them.
Yeah. I mean, it must be a.
These might have had robed it over the last 60 years.
No, what people said, there used to actually be a pretty good-sized beach out front of that whole entire.
There was. Yeah. You could walk it, you know?
Okay.
Good. Did you gentlemen want to excuse yourselves? I mean, just, you can, I think we can let you go because we're just doing, we just have, yeah, we don't, not that we don't love to have you, but.
We'd like to reduce our bill. No, it's good.
Thank you, Nick. Thanks, Rick.
Need a sketch plan?
Okay. Next one is Grady Riley Gardens, which is site plan review application. And we have to send the advisory now to the town board about this. And I had sort of divvied up the work for everybody a little bit. I mean, some of this was like kind of a moot point, like some of it didn't pertain, but. So landscape and screening, that was David K. and Marcus. Com plan was Matt and myself. Compatibility with the existing development was David A. and Marcus. Some cultural features, David A. and Matt, Matt's not here. Natural features, Sean and David A. Just in terms of the general size of this, you know, nursery, Sean and Greg C. And then emergency response access, I put that on you, David, since you are an active member of the fire department. You probably know, have more information on that. All right. So I'll start, because Matt's not here, but I'll speak for both of us. Looking over the existing comprehensive plan, some things that stood out to me in terms of this Grady Riley Nursery is that the com plan, current com plan, this is, again, this is the one from 93. It talks about the importance of the quality of the island, sorry, an important quality of the island is the diversity of its neighborhoods. And so efforts should be made to maintain the distinctiveness of neighborhoods and use that as a guide to future development. They also talk about encouraging businesses that are typically important because of their value as quote, third places, places other than home or work where social interaction can take place. I'm thinking of like I G A, the dump, you know, and Grady Riley perhaps.
Recycling center.
What is it?
Recycling center.
Recycling center. Sorry. Well, if you grew up here, it's the dump. But we say it affectionately. And the other thing is that they talked about, let's see, they also talked about, they want to encourage local businesses that are, sorry, businesses that are operated by local people, making, that are making light demands on non-renewable resources. And having a balance in the type of businesses that you try to attract for year-round population, summer residents, and short-term visitors, and businesses that are on a small scale. They do say in the original comprehensive plan that, given all of this, they want these local, small, light-scale businesses to be wary of water usage and septic and compatibility with the neighborhood and to avoid traffic and parking issues. So having said that, I feel like, you know, at least this site does sort of fit in the original comprehensive plan's vision of what it should be. It's in a, it's in a business zone. So that's just my, my contribution for compatibility with com plan. Anyone else on screening or?
Well, I had a question about that. In the past, that shop has really been oriented towards the street. It's been a front.
Yes.
Operation, as is the bagel shop next door. Everything faces out towards the street. So when I went back, the, I don't, I can't, I don't know who lives in that house behind, sort of elevated up on.
Starzy, it's the Starzy family, yeah.
Yeah. But they haven't done their own screening, so they must not be bothered by, by the fact that there's commercial zone right behind them. But the difference I see is now there are a lot of, public is now back at that residential property line, which has never been the case before. So it raises the question of, and without putting an undue burden on, you know, a small retail operation, is there any way to create some kind of screen separation so that there?
Yeah.
I went, the day I went, it wasn't even that crowded. But, you know, the public is right there.
I had that in, I had that in my notes too, because what came to mind was when Matt and I visited Walter Richards Lawn Care site, okay? And he had personally, to be very neighborly and, you know, courteous to his side lot neighbor, he worked something out with her where he paid for all the screening and he put it in. And he did that before he even went ahead with the site plan review, because he knew that was going to be an issue. Although he had, I think he's got a business on the other side and the back is not the concern, but the one neighbor is kind of like Starzy. And I was thinking to myself that, you know, the shelter around way here would be for the owner to maybe approach Starzy and work something out with screening. And I'm thinking maybe even like, it could be something like, hate to say it, like fake, where it's, you know, just something, because he's got the screen, he's got the fencing there.
That was the only, it was the only thing that jumped out at me. And I'm, you know, clearly the natural thing would be like, okay, you put up something. The question is, is does it really accomplish anything? Because they're at an elevation and their, their pool area is sitting up there. So anything at six feet high is really doing very, very little, probably for the cost benefit. Although if they make the argument that it was, then I think you have to, you know, consider it. The, I don't know, all the requisite regulations, the fence that he put up to house his business, he said is right on the property line. So I don't know, can you do business then right up to the property line? Because he has then all, all the flowers and stuff right up against the back of the fence. And if they can, you know, I don't, it's kind of, I talked to the folks there and clearly the neighbor is not happy, I think has written the town board and expressed a lot of frustration. I think their responses, they bought a home next to a business district and they sit up high and, you know, you have to have reasonable expectations. It's just unfortunately, what used to be a quiet back thing is now busy. But the person always had the right to be there and do something and so.
But I think that's a, that's an important change. And I mean, it is, it's always been commercial, but it's a significant change of usage for to go from a back lot commercial to a public usage. for to go from a, a back lot commercial to a public usage area. Now, the guy is a landscape business, so maybe, maybe there's.
As in Walter's case, he paid for the owner, he paid for the owner to put up screening, I don't know, maybe this owner would, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You should consider what it can do.
They are doing like the fabric shade structure, which will also will block some of that view in the back, right?
So I, I was just thinking of the fencing, as you said, it's way shorter than her property line where she has the pool thing, but, you know, okay, so it's noise coming off from customers walking around, but, yeah, I guess even at that height, just.
Well, the problem is, you can only do so high a fence, shop down.
Yeah.
You're limited.
It's, you're really not, you can't do it, it's, it's not going to change much of the.
The only you could really do is plant trees.
But is there another option, it might be any of.
Cover?
It might be an irregular option, but instead of planting the trees at the bottom of the hill, offer to assist the owner in putting something at the elevated.
That's what I, that's what I meant, that's what I'm saying.
But it, but not at the bottom of the hill.
It's pretty steep, I don't know where they have room, if they're going to maybe put it on the outside of their fence, and, it's, it comes off pretty quick, but I think that's a conversation they should have.
Yeah, there's.
You know, if there is some, you know, or at least.
But it's also covered.
The business should think about what they do and offer up, if there is. The only other thing that jumped out at me, and I don't know that there is what regulation exists.
When I go to have a play, the pallets are hard.
It would really stink.
We can't have talking at all this time.
It'd be really stink to be that homeowner and having big landscape trucks making deliveries at 7:30 in the morning back there. But I don't know whether that's regulated in any way, shape, or form.
No, but I think at our, at our preliminary hearing, the owner mentioned that, that the truck comes in once, I think, once, does everything, and that's it, and then they're dropped, and there's, there's not like trucks coming in every single day. Right, Meg, I think that was, that may be.
Yeah, that was the best.
The only other thing I thought of was to cover it, like, I, I feel like I've been at different, like, it's kind of like landscape, horticultural places where it's covered, not, not with a covered roof, but like, you know, where you can breathe, there's ventilation, but just.
Trellis.
Like a trellis, thank you, trellis, and this way air could still go through, and then that would cover, like, you wouldn't see, necessarily see so much people walking by. I don't know how that would work.
Isn't that what this temporary 20x40 fabric shade structure is?
Not, it's not really a trellis, though, it's just a very gauzy kind of.
Well, I think that's just a question for, for him, is it kind of, he was allowed to go there before this process, because the summer was getting started. So what is his vision if he's allowed to stay there? Is he going to build something there? What could he do for shading, you know, ask him to kind of put forward some, what his thought process is, so we're not just guessing. Because I would think he would try to create a little bit more permanency and structure there to operate.
He was in the other place for pretty long time.
Yeah. Okay.
So are the, I'm just curious, are the pallets that he has shown right up against the property line, is that a permit encroachment in the setback?
I don't know, it didn't look to me like it was like right, it wasn't right on Starzy's line, there was like a space.
I asked them, and I, I asked them, I said, oh, is the fence, you know, in a setback or whatever, and they said, no, it's right at the property line.
It looked to me like.
And I was like, oh, like, you know, and that was my question then, even if you're allowed to put fencing right at the property line, I guess you're allowed to do business right up to the property line, which just stinks, but it is what it is, if you bought next to a business district, you know?
That's kind of the rules.
Oh, we can ask the town board, just, I mean, they're, they're going to look for that anyway, so, you can just, you know, note it, we can observe it and say.
What leave? You can talk to the state.
What are they saying? Um, size, compatibility with the neighborhood, where we find that basically it's business, so I'm going to, David, A.
Yeah, it, I think, I looked, the, which part, I'm saying, trying to remember which part you wanted to ask me about, you're asking about which.
Oh, emergency response.
Emergency response.
How are they going to get?
It's pretty simple.
Okay.
Move the gravel up, gravel driveway in, it's wide enough, we can get in there with it, engine pretty easy.
Okay, we weren't necessarily assigned that thing, but.
Yeah, no, I, I always look, I always look, and it's not a problem, we can get, we can get up that road.
That goes with what we were saying, is asking, what does he see as the permanent state? Because the footprint that he has now may not be what he thinks, it's relatively contained. And would he imagine expanding it, coming out a little bit more, or what? And so we should know what kind of, what is the final state that he's envisioning?
Right, this was sort of like a, like a ad hoc thing, just to get him going for the season.
I would think, but I don't know.
All right.
You also asked about natural.
Yeah.
I think the, the main thing is right across, and Sean, you probably like that too, it's obviously right across from, across West Neck, there is a natural area, right, with, with an ice pond.
Yeah.
But it seems like what they're doing is not going to affect it in any way, so I didn't see any major effect, but that was the only thing as far as.
And right on the other side, you've got the hair salon, that building is right there.
Yeah.
It's a back of another building, so it's really only Starzy's property that.
Yeah, and as you come in on the right-hand side, there are some big trees and stuff, it's just unfortunately not in the place that's providing, you know, a block to, you know, the neighbor that probably matters more.
But again, with, with the lack of, like, it's not going to be the kind of place where trucks are coming in all the time, like, then I would be thinking like noise, but again, it's other businesses there too.
Yeah.
But he should be able to buy trees and mitigate the damage immediately, because he's a landscape guy. And if you look at, for instance, White Oak, as soon as they populate their property with trees, you know, it, it becomes this sort of lush environment.
Yeah.
And I would think that a landscaping alternative should be something that he could accommodate.
Because it's lower, they have to be pretty tall, trees are.
If you get a 20-foot tall grape myrtles and put.
Then it will immediately reduce his commercial space.
Yeah, not much, I mean, he goes right into that area where the pallets are.
I, you should ask him what he's willing to do, and if he has a thought process around it, I mean, in an, in an ideal world, yes, I agree with you, but that expense for that type of business, you know, huge trees to, you know, whatever, I'm not really sure that that's.
More towards approach Starzy, offer to maybe pay for some planting at her elevation, that's what I'm.
I think that would be more effective.
That's kind of what we had in the other site plan review, so. Okay, I think that's it. David, did you want?
I remember there was something else you asked.
Oh, yes, well, no, no, I had you.
Cultural features, yeah, there, there related to me.
Uh, compatibility with existing development, but we sort of, we already hit on that.
Yeah, maybe, sorry, we're still checking.
No, you're okay. And I think that was it.
The other thing, just landscape stuff is, it's not that bad to look at, you know, it's not that hard on the eyes, like crushed concrete or something like that. Beans bags, compost and trees mixed in.
Right, you're looking at hanging.
But if he, and if he makes some more attractive trellis than a temporary thing, that might be more temporary now.
I, I pictured a trellis, this way, if Starzy's up there on her pool, she, you know, you're not going to see just this open thing with people walking around carrying stuff and walking out with, you know, plants, you're going to, it's, it's going to be kind of masked, masked a little bit, but. So the only thing I just want to add is that, the, the reason I asked our engineer and our attorney to leave is that if we're not doing applications, which we have jurisdiction, it's sort of a little bit more conservative on.
Yeah, we're planning by the hour, then, yeah.
Okay, um, so can I?
This could be responsive.
Yes, this could be responsive, okay, does anyone have anything? Does anyone from Zoom have anything from the earlier part of the meeting? I, I may have jumped right into our work session, does anyone on Zoom out there that have anything they want to add? No? Okay, can I have a motion to end the meeting?
Oh, make a motion to end the meeting.
Same. All in favor? Meeting is closed.